All of our productions at GCTV are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need, when you need it, close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, the Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community Television. New Fortune Chinese Restaurant, on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com, call them at 772-0838, and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com, call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave., call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of GCTV's productions.
It's seven o'clock, so I think we'll be able to... I'm just... I want to open the... Yeah. And a second, on the neighbor. Well, good evening. I had no idea how many people would be coming tonight. Welcome. I'm gonna just repeat a few of the ground rules that I mentioned the other night. We do not have an officer.
We must be there.
But we will, but we will certainly strive to have a respectful discourse. And, and I'm going to ask you to please refrain from clapping in case somebody makes some brilliant comment that agrees with what we feel. And also, please, no booby if we miss the mark. It would just be a distraction to us. We're gonna try to keep our wits' mouthless here tonight, so. So we're finally getting our turn to hopefully add to this process. There will be no public comment tonight. The open, I thought the public hearing was closed the other night, so. So tonight, the planning board's role is to give our recommendation to the town council prior to their considering these motions, these initiated proposals. We, as the members of the board, are really compelled by our role to reflect on and then relate to the public our considerations of so often complex and competing so many regulations. And that's the spirit in which we're going to offer our recommendations tonight. I have every bit of confidence that the board has given all of this a lot of consideration over the last few weeks, and then the town council will, will have the option of voting on these three changes as they were approved, approving or rejecting them, or amending them, and then voting on them. We will take each one of them, there are three different proposals. We will take them one at a time, and we, we will also aim to give them a little bit of context. Some of you, if you're really familiar with them, the numbers might mean something, but with just the numbers alone, it doesn't really tell us very much. And, and so, as part of the process tonight, I'm gonna give each member, if they choose, to kind of give their first take on each of these initiated proposals. And then we'll begin our deliberation and begin making recommendations, if we so choose. So, I'm gonna start with the member that'd like to... Oh, we would have to read the first one. I am nervous.
We're doing great, Linda.
The first one is by amending 200-4.16 corridor overlay district by striking A1 in its entirety and replacing with 1. French King Highway/High Street Corridor. Overlay District shall apply to the following roadway corridors: land extending from the intersection of Clark Street and High Street, along High Street, south to Smith Street, and 2, the land east of the French King Highway and north of Canada Hill Road, to the junction of French King Highway and Route 2. So basically, this change leaves the Nolan Vica property at the northernmost tip of the French King Highway in the overlay district, as well as the area south of Clark Street to Smith Street, with the central portion of the corridor overlay district out of the corridor overlay district. The purpose of the corridor overlay district is to create attractive entryways into Greenfield, to minimize strip development and traffic congestion, to protect scenic and natural features, to promote high-quality building and site design. And the underlying district of the corridor overlay district is general commercial. Perhaps one of the more controversial aspects of the discussion around this particular zoning amendment has been that gas stations and takeout, drive-in, or drive-through restaurants shall be prohibited in the French King Highway High Street Corridor. So that's the purpose of this, of the overlay district. So now I'll call upon you, and you can just take turns as you wish, if you would like to sort of give your thinking, at least your initial thinking about this.
Can I start?
Go for it.
Alright, so I've written some things down here. I mean, my concern with sending a positive recommendation to the city council on these initiatives is that it sets a precedent for granting zoning measures for political expediency. It degrades the zoning process in the planning board, in this case. We do, however, have the opportunity to send the town council recommendations to the current zoning initiative that will offer a compromise to the compromise, support good planning, and satisfy the desire of those who wish to make Greenfield appear more business-friendly. On the matter of the scenic corridor, with the exception of gas stations and drive-through fast food restaurants, the overlay district does not restrict development in any way. It's a guideline for how to create environmentally responsive, scale-appropriate development along our northern gateway. This is the document. It's not an onerous tome of burdensome regulations. By my count, the word "should" appears 36 times in the text, as in "should minimize," "should not impede," "should be compatible," "should be softened," "should be avoided." This is indeed a flexible document intended to serve as a template for negotiation between developers and the town as a balance of the economic and programmatic needs of the developer with the city's desires to maintain its beautiful northern entryway. It outlines a set of parameters, as Linda was, Linda was talking about, that clarifies the requirements of any special permit, the site plan review application. It's not a site jacket, it's not a stray jacket, it's not a U-turn. And enlightened developers will actually welcome these guidelines as it will increase their own property values and the values of the neighbors' property. This alone helps Greenfield's tax base. It's my opinion, with reasonable updating to reflect the ways in which Greenfield has grown and changed in the last 25 years, the scenic corridor overlay should remain intact as it was originally created in 1993. So those are just some of my organized thoughts. Thank you.
Will you submit that as part of the record?
I will.
I put my thoughts to paper.
Oh, good.
At large font, too.
That's the only way mine works. I support the zoning change to the corridor overlay district for the following reasons. Our job as members of the planning board, one, long-range planning; two, reviewing, deciding, and making recommendations on development proposals. What has been constantly overlooked in the long-range planning for our communities are the rapidly changing statistics on the makeup of this community, particularly as it relates to age and disability. Freely, although less often, what is overlooked is the ever-changing economic disparities within the town itself. The numbers don't lie. Are we planning for the future if we are not looking at the changing characteristics of the composition of the population? Zoning laws can exacerbate inequality. Restrictive zoning can also hinder intergenerational mobility. I have seen that happening here. This information is from the most recent U.S. and Donahue Institute for Current Long-Term Population Projections in Brookshire and Franklin County. We have, and are expected to have, despite all of our efforts, stagnancy in relatively all cohorts except those over 65. By 2035, the number of 65 older will double. We also have the highest population of people with disabilities in all of Franklin County. People move here to be closer to services. Over and over again, I hear and read the development of the downtown area as the choice spot for commercial development. I love the downtown area. Still, it is time to face the facts. Ease of access is what seniors need. It is what people with mobility impairments need also. Many to most downtown buildings are difficult to access due to age of the building, parking, etc. Despite heroic efforts of the DPW and business owners, winter makes these problems much worse. After every storm, the sidewalks are shoveled, the cut is made from the street to the sidewalk so patrons can get to the parking meters and then to their destination. But, snow melts and refreezes, making that entrance into their destinations difficult. I serve as a member of the Disability Access Commission also. Without going into detail on individual businesses or municipal buildings, I will tell you that the overwhelming majority of complaints and issues of access are with the downtown buildings. Tonight, we have an opportunity to plan for the future, looking at the real facts of the composition of the town. Just as the building that we are in here tonight has ease of access, so will the future buildings constructed in the yet undeveloped land to be changed by voting yes on the first part of this zoning change. We have an obligation to plan for the future per the master plan. We should reduce the financial resources that are leaving our community. I am not a shopper. Most of my friends are seniors and are shoppers. They shop and go to the movies outside of this town. Why? Ease of access and the variety that they desire. And for the 17.9% of the population here below the poverty level, and for the 46% of homeowners here who are housing burdened by cost, and for the average senior here whose income is 33% less than the average citizen here, we must make choices that make their lives reachable. Greenfield has 14,356 acres of land. Of that, 8,266 acres are open space and recreation. 1,756 acres are agricultural. The two categories that have increased in size recently are open space and residential. We have done a magnificent job making this a green community, markedly reducing the use of fossil fuels and markedly increasing the use of solar due to the tireless efforts of those working on the Greenfield and so many others. We are the county's seed. Other towns often look to us for help with public safety. Why? Because we have the best and largest fire and police department in the county. We are the city with the hospital and with the detox units, and people move here to be closer to those services. Within the past week, there were two huge water main breaks, one on Deerfield Street and one on Country Club Road. We have 103 miles of water mains. Forty percent of our water mains are over 50 years old. Infrastructure is aging and must be updated and maintained. All of the above involves cost. We need to plan not just for what needs updating and building, we must plan for economic growth and development to ensure that the needs of all economic classes and the needs of the mushrooming senior population are met. This involves a zoning change. With marked opposition, we passed the accessory dwelling unit ordinance and marijuana ordinance. One involved the need for a new type of housing geared towards the changing demographics. The other involved a new type of production and retail that would add revenue to the town and was endorsed by the electorate. More zoning changes need to be made besides the ones we are looking at tonight, like mixed-use housing throughout the town, infill development, complicate housing, increasing density, and multifamily dwellings in new zones. Not in my backyard and historic preservation are ways to limit development. Limiting types of zoning makes inequality worse. Persevering to avoid development is short-sighted and the most harmed by, by, and the most harmed by persevering against development are the economically challenged. I hope we are better than that. All that being said, I am voting for the change. Twenty years without commercial development in a commercial zone, we must be making it a wee bit too difficult. Perhaps that was the intent.
I'll go next. So I don't have any written comments, like everybody else here, but I'm basically gonna say what I said a couple of years ago when this specific proposal to remove the French King Overlay District came about. In this case, it's not being proposed to remove the whole thing, but effectively would be removing it. And just wanted to note the idea that we're leaving the Nolan Vica project land, and that land's already permanently protected, so it doesn't quite make a difference in this case. But I guess, yeah, just, I guess to rip off of Ginny a little bit, I appreciate your statistics there about the open space in the town, Ginny. I will say that that data reflects town-owned land, it reflects land that isn't necessarily permanently protected. And I want to really hearken us back to the documents that we have written and put a lot of thought and time and energy into producing over the last five, 10 years, and these include both the Sustainable Master Plan and the Open Space and Recreation Plan, which this board, a number of years ago, signed on to as well. And as I said two years ago, the Open Space and Recreation Plan specifically calls out the importance of preserving the ridge and the area along the French King. And it does that because it's really significant. I heard a lot of the comments from folks at the Nolan Vica Project, from people who drive that way. Again, it's, the ridge is very geologically significant historically to folks who've been here for, we're here for 10,000 years. And as Charles mentioned, you know, these are just design guidelines, and they help us be good planners. They help us do our job really well and service community. So, while I appreciate that people might be on the side of "I want gas stations," or "I don't," in this case, we're being asked to remove whole hog, the entire protection. We're not saying, you know, "just remove gas stations, just allow, just allow gas stations, you know, just do this." We're basically not evil because of the way this has come to us as the planning board, to be able to be discerning and be really thoughtful about how we might want this ordinance to read differently. There might be good reason to allow certain kinds of uses that are not currently being allowed, but that's not the proposal before us. And in fact, the proposal before us doesn't really have a lot of scientific backing. There's no data to say one way or the other. There's no data showing how this will actually promote or support economic development or the tax base. That data isn't there, hasn't been provided to us, and we've asked. And so, my humble opinion is that, you know, the overlay district should stand as it is until it can come back around and we can really think more thoughtfully as a whole community about how to achieve the goals our town has already set out around open space, around views, about thoughtful building and planning, keeping Greenfield scenic, and being a little bit more thoughtful in terms of what kind of development may or may not make sense for that part of our community. So I would not vote in favor of this particular part of what we're discussing tonight.
Sure, thanks, Linda. I appreciate, Ginny, what you were referencing from the town website about the first role of the planning board is long-range planning. I also kept coming back to, we have three zoning changes that were presented to us by the town council, state council, for review and recommendation, and none of those three recommendations, three proposals contain the word "library." We're just focused on the merits of the zoning proposals themselves. Zoning is one of the most powerful tools for shaping a community and determining its future. Zoning changes should be the result of careful and fully informed contemplation, not subject to the politics and passions of the moment. We are planners, not politicians. As such, we're obliged to take the long view. A contrary example, and Gai has touched on some of the things. My colleagues have referenced this rushed process because the time to research more and get more comparables from other communities and look at the nuances and the details is curtailed by an external timetable that has nothing to do with what was sent to us to comment on. And I compare that with the updating of the use table, which is a list of which types of uses are allowed in which zones in the town, whether or not at all, by right or by special permit. And there was a months-long review by a working group that was representing, representing multiple town entities, and then it came, the recommendations of that group came to the planning board, and we've been going over the recommendations line by line, accepting most of them, but adjusting some or discarding some after in-depth conversations. This is, if there weren't people there for that discussion, and people would not have been particularly riveted. But it's a slow and painstaking, but that's how planning works. As far as specifically the, well, I'll say too that one councilor last week during the deliberation of the EDC referred to a future conversation about mixed use, including housing. And such a conversation is the perfect example of a proper planning process. As far as the specific thing we're talking about at the moment, the overlay proposal. One councilor, another councilor cited that the master plan supports a diversity of retail options. And that's totally true. The Economic Development Chapter calls to, quotes, "encourage retail options that appeal to all socioeconomic groups in Greenfield and surrounding areas." The current zoning allows for that. A large retail project on the French King was successfully approved in 2011 by the planning board with an MDR process in the corridor overlay district. Since then, it's obviously been held up by a legal process, but from the point of view, the zoning, that did, did get approved. And I am, I was, Ginny, you're highlighting accessibility, and I was also a former member of the Commission on Disability Access. And when we're doing, we're doing our hat of reviewing specific projects, we're always looking to maximize accessibility, and that would be the same whatever the court process were to come through with anything. But that had been addressed when that was approved by the planning board previously. I want to add too that the Economic Development Chapter of the master plan also calls to incentivize redevelopment and infill of unused space for a wide range of economic development opportunities. And the Land Use Chapter calls for, quotes, "compact residential and commercial development and redevelopment focused in and around downtown and other previously developed areas." So, I want to give all that context for my personal, private deliberative process, and it's not obvious to me that there's a zoning planning benefit to, to approving the particular proposal that's been brought forth. It always would be interesting in learning more, hearing from proponents of the proposals, what was the reason for this, the reason for that, in more detail, and have time to research it and talk it over more. We are not being allowed that time by this process. So seeing no compelling reason to change something, and I appreciate Charles's overview of the, that this isn't an absolutist, all-or-nothing kind of document that does allow for some flexibility, I would also not be supportive of giving a positive recommendation about that specific proposal. Thanks.
Amy and Jim, I always allow you to, even if you aren't voting, and even if you'd like to share anything, and you don't have to.
Jim, who's the first alternate?
Well, I've been here with planning board for better than 12 of the last 15 years. And I've lived in Greenfield for nearly the last 55 years. I've seen Greenfield change for the better. I've seen it change for the worse. I've seen it stagnate at times. Right now, I feel we're stagnant. We need to look to a future so that every person within an hour's drive would want to come to Greenfield with some reason, whether that's for a nice evening out, or a nice place to shop, nice place to go to school, GCC. Whatever reason, we need to have people come here that don't come here normally. We need to come, have people come here that look forward to coming here on a regular, regular basis. If you, if you have a favorite restaurant, whether it's in North Hampton, or North Adams, or Ethel, or every area, I don't want to see you once, I want to see you every time you come here. I want you to come to the same place that I come. I rarely go outside of town for a night out, or for a place to shop, or whatever. Sometimes I have to. Monetarily, sometimes I, I probably should more, more often. I am for growth in Greenfield. I am, at all costs, I think we need to grow. And growing is going to have to be more than, more than retail, more than what marijuana's gonna do for us, more than what new sewers and water mains are gonna do for us. We need to have everybody working to make this town growth-oriented.
And as somebody who owns a business downtown and with a pro-
And, um, as somebody who owns a business downtown and with the proceeds that I've earned, purchased a residence downtown, I want to say thank you to this planning board and planning boards of the past that have been very protective of the downtown. Um, I certainly have benefited from it, and that has not gone unnoticed. Um, I've driven on the French King overlay about 10 times since this came under consideration, and it's difficult for me to describe it as scenic. And, um, it seems to me as incomplete development, from stop and shop to the industrial park. So, I would just like to publicly say I don't think it's very scenic. I don't think we're pervert, we're preserving any scenic, um, entrance into the, the town. And, um, I'm, I'm not voting tonight, so, you know, I'm sure this will come under consideration in the future, and it's something that I will, um, hope to be as measured in my consideration as the current members and thoughtful in my process. But at this point, I cannot say that, um, I truly believe that the development would move the needle adversely for the downtown.
You know, I, um, I too have been thinking a lot about the French King area because that has garnered so much attention, um, with these proposed overlay changes. Um, and I've been really trying to think, so what is it that is keeping the French King from being developed? Um, it was interesting to hear, you know, from a lot of citizens that they would love to see an Athol-type development in Greenfield. And I drove out to see that development, and, um, and sure enough, it, it's really quite something. And really, that whole area, I mean, has nothing around it. They do have a Walmart, but the downtowns of Orange and Athol have hardly any businesses that I could see there. So they certainly do need that kind of development. Uh, and, and I understand, and I shop at some of those very stores that are in that development occasionally. So I hear and understand that. But then I realized that those, I think it was that development of all of those new very popular stores is, takes place on 71 acres of land. We don't have any parcels in Greenfield that could accommodate that kind of development. That's just not what we have. In the French King area, I believe the biggest parcel there is the 18-acre development, the 18-acre parcel for which a big box, and I hate to use that term, but that we have no idea what actual retail, uh, store was potentially going to come in, so it's been labeled the big box. But as, as someone else mentioned, that big box was approved to come into town on that 18-acre slot. But we really don't have any parcels that I know of that could accommodate what's become kind of the, the norm for retail, um, development, especially in more rural areas. Cities have to adapt a little differently. What else is preventing? Now, it could be that the absence of gas stations and, um, takeout drive-through restaurants. Possibly one could, would come in if it was allowed to that area. Although, one of the reasons I think that there has been less development there, well, I think there are a lot of them. And Eric outlined some of them, if you read his, um, article in the paper. Excuse me. Um, and one of the ones he thought was that probably because it's been tied up in court, that there are landowners along there who really aren't so terribly interested in selling their property until they know what's coming. Another thing is that all those parcels out there are very tiny. They can't accommodate huge development, and some of those parcels also are on very steep terrain and have wetland issues. So I think those are all contributing factors to why there has been less development than a lot of people would like in that area. Um, the zone general commercial actually offers a great number of uses that are permitted in addition to retail. Business and professional offices could go there, personal and consumer service businesses, and light industry could go in there. Manufacturing, processing plants, trade shops, medical centers or clinics, hotels, assisted living, single-family, two-family, and multifamily dwellings. And by the way, it's been mentioned that, uh, we were working on the use, um, table, and one of the ones that we have come to consensus about is mixed residential and business use. So, you know, I think there are, I think the economic situation is also just in general preventing from a lot of development to come in there. I don't think, that I know of, that it's because it's the corridor overlay district. And in fact, when the, um, when the big box, um, was being evaluated and did come under the corridor overlay district, um, the corridor overlay dis, uh, the, that made it possible to actually make that a better project than it came into us originally. It added more landscaping. It added some architectural detail, so it didn't look quite as much like a big warehouse. It also added, as I, if I recall correctly, it added a bus, an enclosed kind of bus area for people who had to use public transportation to get there. All of those are things that I think we as citizens would like to see in a development that would come here. So I too, I just don't think it's the corridor overlay district that is the primary factor about not getting the kind of development we'd like. And I really resent, you know, the idea that those who want to really loosen all of the regulations are anti-growth. I would love to see the, the French King Highway become full of really nice businesses that are offering jobs to people and offering all kinds of shopping or services that we all need. So that's my take on it. Um, so I think what we need to do is to start, if people have, want to make a motion or incorporate some of these things, a recommendation, I would ask at the board.
So just on the first one, though?
Just on the first one. We will, we will take them one at a time. I think that makes it easier. I, you know, some of them do have things that kind of relate to all of them, but I think maybe cleaner and easier to do them one at a time. Yes, I think George has his hand up first.
Thanks, Linda.
I'm going to try to be really good at this discipline tonight, so.
I would move to forward a negative recommendation on this proposal to the city council.
One second. Any discussion on that, or any recommendations, or?
Is that a discussion? I, um, appreciate, um, Amy, I can't remember exactly what you used, but that the corridor is, is, it's not the picture of postcard we send in Greenfield. Um, and, and you used, it's incompletely developed or something like that. Um, and I, and I, I agree with Linda that if, this isn't meant to, um, the, the purpose of the overlay isn't, um, to keep that, um, section of town, uh, pristine from any development, but it is meant to, um, shape and guide a certain type of development. So it doesn't have that hard decline, but that, you know, feeling of heavy sense of, uh, strict, um, kind of. So I, I think it's, it's finding a way to, or I think it's, it's there to help, um, uh, guide a certain, uh, style and, uh, type of development. And I, and I think that, um, whatever the resolution is of the court thing about the, I mean, the, the only member of the planning board that was on the board at the time, um, that , uh, project on the French King was approved. Um, but, you know, it being resolved one way or another will perhaps free things up a bit for something happening in that.
Any other discussion?
Well, I, I agree with a lot of what you just said, George. I mean, the, the French King corridor is kind of ad hoc, it's kind of funky, and, and we, but we have the ability here by maintaining the overlay corridor to ensure that the development that does move in there is appropriately designed, it's well landscaped, it's, uh, it's got, uh, it has appropriate stormwater drainage, the traffic's being dealt with intentionally, the site circulation is being dealt with intelligently, and then, and then it doesn't just become a strip wasteland, but it becomes, but it becomes even with the similar kind of businesses that you might think normally going into a strip are well-designed, well-landscaped, well-integrated into the fabric, so that it builds, it builds on what's there, and ultimately becomes better, it becomes attractive gateway and a model for how that kind of development should be done.
I would also say, you know, from my experience, having been on the planning board for quite a long time at this point, um, that, you know, developers, for the most part, are as interested as we are in having their developments look attractive, be popular, uh, feel like they're a part of the community. Um, so it, really, I, I've been on very few, in very few sessions where we've been talking about development that were at all, you know, uncomfortable or not, you know, they're usually very collaborative, um, gatherings, and I think you've all been part of some of those too. So it, uh, you know, I don't think it's an onerous thing to, uh, it's a relationship. When a, when a business is coming to Greenfield, we're establishing, the town has a relationship with that business and with that developer. And, you know, it should be a mutual process, and it off, and it mutually is, um, of getting, of making it work the best for all concerned. So, we have a motion on the floor to send a negative, um, recommendation. There is a second. Is there any more deliberation?
Well, would anyone consider, um, discussing possible amendments, uh, recommendations or changes to the amendment that might?
Uh, they're certainly up for consideration, absolutely. Would you have some?
I would suggest that we have a, a motion on the table and a second, and we don't want to confuse that by making any substantive change, so I think we should vote. We don't want a substantive change to this, to push the time clock back. So I think we have a motion and a second. You can kind of see the writing on the wall. I would suggest we vote.
Actually, can I get a point of clarification? Would putting an amendment on actually change the timetable? Our recommendations are going to the town council. It's whether, if they...
Nobody, if the council itself makes certain change.
Right. So we, we are able to, to suggest changes. They will either accept them or not accept them, I believe. I, I, is that correct?
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay. So, I mean, we just have them inhibited by making suggestions. Um, it's, that gets affected by their vote on something. Yes, George?
And I just wanted to say, again, from our planning perspective, um, that should not be, from my perspective, a, a consideration. We have proposals. We're accommodating the process by moving quickly, much more quickly than we would, we would normally, or typically, um, to get something back to the council, so we're not, um, impeding their process that they initiated. But as far as the content of any recommendations, I don't think we should, uh, do anything if it's recommendations we would have. I don't think we should be factoring in whether they're substantive or not, just whether they're good.
So that being said, Charles, do you have something to add to it?
Well, my thought, my thought in making recommendations at this point is that the, um, the town council is going to vote the way they see fit. Um, and, you know, if, you know, they're going to, they're going to vote this up or down. If they decide to move these initiatives forward regardless of, of our recommendations, um, regardless of whether we recommend a positive or negative, uh, vote on this, if we offer suggestions, at least it's something for them to consider and potentially incorporate into, uh, the initiatives that they pass, and then maybe they could amend what they've got. Or, so it's just a way of, of sort of adding our, our two cents.
Absolutely. That's, that's how I see that. So if you have something that you want to...
It's a whole other meeting.
Or we can all get in both times.
It is, it is a whole other meeting, and I'm really afraid of stepping into something that, that would be, it would be controversial, because it is such a, it is such a delicate hot-button issue. And I think we've been really clear about what we, what we, what we really collectively here. So, maybe I don't have anything else to offer.
Okay, very good. So we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. And just now, on to the next one.
Can I have, are we doing the other overlay districts, um, or French King proposal? I see it would just seem that might make sense, but that's just a suggestion.
Oh, well, I was going to take them in order of, of their, their being given to us, so. So my paperwork is all in there.
All right.
Um, okay.
Yeah.
So the, the second one, um, is about the major development review. And I will read this as it was given to me, and then I'll try to put that into a little perspective as well. Um, so.
So, Linda, can you speak up a little bit? Can you hear her in the back, everyone?
I will try to speak up. We couldn't get at the, the audio box there today, so we don't have, um, microphones, but 200-dash-seven-point-12, major development review. And these are the changes that are being proposed. In section B1, replacing 1,000 with 3,000, and replacing 500 with 1,500. And in section B4, replacing 100,000 with 150,000, and 15,000 with 35,000, and 40,000 with 75,000, and deleting section B5 in its entirety. In section C, striking number one and number two in their entirety, and replacing it and replacing it with a special permitting grant, granting authority shall be the zoning board of appeals. And in Section E, striking adversely impact and replace with create a materially adverse impact on. And in Sections F, adding prior to the words upon the review of the project, the following language. Notwithstanding the provisions of Massachusetts General Law C40A, all decisions of the special permitting granting authority shall be made within 210 days from the initial date of application. The failure to issue a decision within 210 days shall result in the granting of the special permit as presented. And a constructive grant shall be issued in accordance with the provision of Mass. General Law 40A. And further amend the Table of Contents and Index of the Code and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of the ordinance be permitted in order that it follow the numbering format of the code of the town of Greenfield. The provisions of this regulation shall be severable. Should any section or provision of this regulation be held to be invalid or unenforceable for any reason, this shall not affect the validity or enforceability of any other section or provision of this regulation. And this regulation, exclusive of the invalid or unenforceable section or provision, shall to the full extent consistent with the law remain in full force and effect. So I'm going to try to give you a little nutshell of what this means. And first of all, the purpose. The purpose of the MDR is to identify and attempt to mitigate potential negative impacts to the city of Greenfield such as to town services, traffic patterns, the environment, abutting properties, or the public health and safety caused directly or indirectly by major development. So, kind of in a nutshell, and I think if anybody is proposing any kind of changes to these numbers, that you kind of spell out what exactly that will affect. But in general speaking, the numbers referenced have to do with thresholds that would cause MDR review to happen. So, for instance, in B1, in the B1 original, and changes proposed. And B4 refers to current size and the proposed sizes. So for instance, B1, all new uses defined by the Greenfield zoning ordinance that generate 1,000 vehicle trips per day or more in the general commercial district or 500 vehicle trips per day in any other district. So that would be in the other commercial districts, in industrial districts, or even in the residential districts. So from 1,000 trips per day, the increase that word is before us is 3,000 vehicle trips per day would be needed. 500 trips per day in other districts has been bumped up to 1,500 vehicle trips today, per day, which is what would trigger then MDR, kind of looking at that whole development piece. So I don't know if that helps. I hope that it's just hard to see, listen to just a bunch of numbers. And so we'll try to make that kind of as clear as we can. So, again, if people would like to speak to the MDR piece, and it is somewhat complicated because there are a number of things that are being proposed for change here, so. Jim, you want to start?
This part is multifaceted and complicated. I would suggest that we take a vote on it as a whole. To me, listening to my fellow members with my great respect, I think I can see the writing on the wall for how this probably is going to go. So this is not something that perhaps we would have put together in this manner as it pulls from different sections of these zoning ordinance. So I respect everyone's opinion. I would suggest that we take a vote on it.
Without discussing?
Well, you can go further in discussion, but I personally would not say, I would not want to go through line by line for the number of vehicles that go back and forth. I would just take it as it was.
I, well, I agree with you. There's a lot here. There are, there's sort of four major components to this, and I think that they can be addressed individually. And I think that we can make recommendations on each of those four points and not get overcomplicated.
Yeah, I think we can too. And I was just thinking that if you are referencing some specific numbers that don't feel good to you, to just be sure that we all understand what you're saying. But I agree, there's many sections to this, so. Do you have anything?
Should I go forward?
Sure.
So with respect to the proposed MDR changes, the primary difference between MDR and site plan review and special permit as they currently exist are the requirements for the applicant to submit an impact statement and a traffic study. The impact statement is a deeper dive into many of the same areas of inquiry that site plan review and special permit applicants are already asked to address, such as impacts to municipal utilities, services such as water, sewage, stormwater, emergency services, and schools. The developers also asked to address the fiscal impact to their project on the town such as cost of town services, projected tax revenue, and job creation. The other major development of MDR is the traffic study and verification that levels of service and affected intersections will not be adversely impacted. Anyone who's waited at the traffic light at Federal and Main Street for more than one cycle or they're on their way to work would sort of probably sympathize with this. These are issues that most citizens agree fully or agree are important for developers to address as they move into our community. However, no reasoned analysis has been offered by the city council for triple the number of car trips, a 50% increase in building area in the PI district, and more than doubling the building area thresholds in general commercial in all of the district. There just needs to be more of a conversation here about these sorts of changes. Some of the other, some of the other aspects of this proposal are the, how to do with the planning board review. So this initiative also strips the planning board of its oversight and MDR review process for byright applications. No rationale has been articulated for this change, and it comes across as punitive and arbitrary and insulting to this board. Furthermore, it deprives Greenfield of a permitting process that includes a diverse range of informed oversight and healthy discussion when it comes to the development of large-scale projects in town. And then another aspect is how we deal with existing businesses and growth of existing businesses in town. The second, less discussed proposed zone change eliminates entirely MDR review for the expansion of existing uses regardless of the number of car trips, number of dwelling units and building lots created, or the proposed gross floor area of an increased building size. So I understand the idea is to make it easier for existing businesses to grow in town, but to remove all limits to growth without any measure of MDR oversight should be discussed in more detail before granting the blanket waiver proposed here. The current threshold for MDR is any increase in size of a 20% of existing development. A reasonable discussion could be had about increasing this threshold. However, eliminating it entirely invites unintended consequences should businesses with enough property choose to double the size of their business and not be held to MDR. So I don't believe this is anti-business. I believe it's about encouraging and balancing the needs of expanding businesses with town services and traffic to ensure that they thrive and are invested in the community they want to become a part of or are already a part of. The last thing is it has to do with the 210-day permitting limit. The proposed 210-day permit limit for the city to grant a special permit for losing the authority of its oversight on a submitted application. So I appreciate the desire to expedite the permitting procedures and maintain a fair and efficient process. However, it leaves open the door for abusive process by a developer who drags his feet in request for additional information, thereby extending the permitting process behind the 210-day limit and then bypassing the process altogether. Minor wording of this amendment could be added that includes language stating the applicant is required to provide within a reasonable timeframe any information with 210-day time limit should be extended commensurately. Those are my general thoughts on those four aspects.
Anyone else?
Oh, Jim. My concern is the vehicle trips and things like that. We would go from 500 to multiples of the 500, we go to the 1,500. I don't think that anything, any one of those changes should more than double. So if it's gone 500, if it's gone to 1,000, that's a major, major jump. To put it off until 1,500, that might be too much. 500, or whatever it is, or 1,000, or 3,000, anything more than doubling it is taking it way out of perspective. I'm against anything other than a double.
Anyone else?
Thanks. Again, thinking and getting what information we could together about this, the MDR, major development review, would appear objectively to be working. There are relatively small numbers for which guidelines, the guidelines trigger an MDR. There have been six since 2009, and none of those have been denied. Here's the list. It's the transit center, the French King project, the addition to the hospital, the Ford Toyota, the old Wunt property. And very recently, and more relevant to the commercial interest that's driving this recommended change is the planning board approved a commercial development, the hotel and retail project at 125 Mohawk Trail, reusing what had been a dilapidated motel there. And kind of as Linda alluded to, this was a very amicable and collaborative process with the developer. We had a hearing, and the board heard, a public hearing, the board heard and represented issues raised by the butters and sort of, you know, tried to represent their interests and the town's interests in having a collaborative exchange with the developers. And again, that was something that was approved. So there haven't been any that haven't been approved, and there haven't been that many that the existing guidelines have triggered. I very much agree with you, Jim. I had a note here about the guidelines. I said, why triple? As far as the, you know. Another thing is, one council last week at EDC stated, I trust our boards. And that's encouraging, but the boards need the proper tools to do our job effectively on behalf of the town. The elimination of, total elimination of expansion in any way triggering this. Again, if you want to talk about adjusting the percentage increase, but it just seems so unwise and so much an unintended consequence. And the language, slight language change about create a materially adverse impact rather than not adversely impact, perhaps that's reasonable, but it wasn't clear to me what really that change means and how it changes the standard. And as far as the 210 days, I think it's positive to expect the process to be professional and respectful and responsive to all parties. But it's not wise to create an arbitrary timeline. One of the proponents of this wrote some rationale to the board and said that if the deadline is approaching, we could always just deny the special permit. And that was just such a huge red flag for me about, you know, an understanding of the planning process because that would seem to obviously constitute an arbitrary capricious decision-making process, which our training indicates is the last thing that we've wanted. So I agree with Charles that that seems ill-advised. The intention, again, the intention of having a facilitated process, respectful process, is important. I don't think putting an arbitrary timeframe on that. And I think we're trying to do that routinely. As far as the special permit granting authority, the, and I don't take that suggestion as a personal one. I'm not assuming it's relevant to who's on each board currently. I look at it more from a structural point of view. And the, again, the rationale given to us or mentioned by one, the council, one of the proponents, was that the, to change it from the planning board to the ZBA for a reason of separation of powers, specifying that the planning board is more involved in creating and amending zoning ordinance as we're being asked to comment on now. And that separation of powers idea seems to be more like a political concept that seems improperly applied in the planning context. The planning board is charged by state statute to create and update the master plan. And as such, we're the entity most intimately in touch with the vision of the community's future as far as planning and development. If anything, if I were going to consider a change to the MDR standards, currently the ZBA is the, they did one of the six that was on the list I mentioned. And they are currently the special permit granting authority if the use requires a special permit in the zone it's going into. So in some ways, it feels like that's the anomaly, not having a planning board do it when it's allowed by right. I don't want to take up too much time, but I just, I kept having this image currently because we're thinking of, you know, different tools we use. And it also mentioned that we've had such limited time to research. Eric sent out, sent them to the Mass Planner listserv, and we've got three responses from other communities. Linda was asking if board members had a chance to, you know, research other, other communities as far as their threshold levels and get some comparables. It's just been such a compressed period of time. That's, that's the work, is to make those comparisons and to get that information. And it just kept coming back to me, thinking, you know, we're talking about tools and what we use. This analogy that this process is like trying to sculpt the zoning ordinance, but you're throwing away the chisel and you're just using a hammer. It just seems so blunt and so crude. It's not really doing the research and the detailed nuance work that takes time. Like sorry about so long.
I also wanted to speak, actually, to the change in the, who has the authority over all of this. And actually, you know, the ZBA and the planning board are both appointed committees, get appointed by the mayor for a certain term. You know, obviously, they change from time to time, but I- You know, obviously, they change from time to time, but I mean, the process in their becoming is exactly the same, so. And I didn't really take it personally either, but the one thing that I think is really important in here is that they want everything done by the zoning board of appeals, but by Massachusetts general law, I think planning boards have to be the ones who regulate subdivisions, for instance. And so that would have to be changed, I believe. I don't know how they'll go about doing that if...
Yes, Aunt Jerry, the planning board has to remain the review authority for subdivisions. So the current proposal, whether it has to be changed to allow a planning board to be a special permit granting authority for subdivisions, they can keep the rest for the ZBA, but as proposed, it cannot move forward because it would be illegal to make the ZBA do subdivisions.
And that issue, to me, also spoke to the fact that this was put together pretty quickly and didn't really have the research that, you know, is needed. I mean, everybody can make a mistake, believe me. It's easy to make a mistake, but, but I think it does speak somewhat to the process of what happened. And, and similarly, it had to be re-initiated at one point because there was another glitch and something that was written into it. And when it came, when it came back to us after the re-initiation, not only was that glitch fixed, but all these numbers that we were talking about jumped another 500 or 1,000. So it made me uncomfortable with the process by which this had been done so quickly. And, you know, as chair of a board, I certainly understand the pressure that the town council president is under as well. It, I can very much relate to that. But, you know, again, as the planning board, I think we have to look at this in terms of the needs of the planning system and how, how things are traditionally done. So that's as far as what I have to say.
Anybody else? Jenny, did you want to say something?
No, I would, I think everybody said what they feel. I think I moved the question. I think we all know how we feel, even on all the different, all different sections of this.
So is there a motion? I'll move to make a negative recommendation. A second?
I'll second that.
All in, any more discussion? All in, oh, one more piece of discussion?
Yeah, I wasn't voting out. Yeah, I think there is, I think this process tonight, our deliberation, is reflecting the way our board and planning board should work, that we're talking this through. I'm so delighted to have so many members of the public here, and always happy to have members of the public at your meeting. And so I think it's important that we be transparent and thorough about our rationale with each other and with anyone who's, who's listening. So I don't think, including a certain, it's not all about the outcome. It's about, it's, I think that's kind of what we're saying, it's so much about the process. So I'm glad you're taking the time to go through these various details and perspectives.
So we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
So the motion carries to send a negative recommendation on the changes to the MDR. The third one is a little less complicated. Okay, I will read what came before us. "Amend the zoning map incorporated into the Greenfield zoning ordinance by section 200-3.2, changing the underlying district of the corridor overlay district defined in section 200-4.16A of this ordinance from general commercial to general industrial." So anybody, would you like to, I think that's pretty straightforward and, okay. Yes?
I would give a negative recommendation on this because in general, in general, in G.C., by special permit, lay industrial is allowed. Also, we are looking at the use tables right now for that, for all of general commercial. So I think for us to be even considering giving this a positive recommendation would be hasty and unwise because we are just working on the use tables, that's what we're up to next.
George?
I agree with every word Jenny said.
The easy way out. Our chapter is done.
Yes. Anybody else?
Well, I wrote a lot, but I don't know how, I don't know how relevant it all is. So, you know, I appreciate the spirit which the initiative is offering in terms of allowing uses in the French King that might create higher-paying jobs and minimum wage, fast food, gas station, or chain retail positions that tend to be offered in those situations. But any change to the zoning map at this point should be a citywide effort that includes the city council, the planning board, the ZBA, the Office of Economic Development. This actually will create an opportunity to study in depth possible changes to the zoning map that includes allowable uses, site planning versus special permit, to add use for creating sustainable growth and development. There needs to be a stated goal of such an effort and process that is outlined and presented to the public with opportunities for the public to have their input and build consensus along the way so that we can move forward as a united community with a, with a clear path towards growth and benefits. Greenfield economically increases our tax base, creates jobs, protects existing businesses in respects the quality of our local environment. I believe all this is possible. Greenfield has the opportunity to become a model for how to encourage economic growth in community, so let's do it together.
Okay.
That's my cheer.
Well, I'm kind of not far behind you. I think I have a few things maybe that you didn't, that I was thinking too. And I kind of, I just so much appreciate Ashley Stemples putting this motion forward because I really think it is a discussion that we absolutely have to have. I too was going to recommend a negative vote on this mainly because, first of all, I think that the general commercial designation for that corridor, the French King area, actually gives more options than the industrial designation, even though I would love to see some industrial that is permitted in that area to come in because, you know, we do need more industrial land. But, I, if you haven't driven through, and it's sort of an out-of-the-way place, but to drive through the industrial park always makes me feel good, to see all of those parking lots full of cars, you know, and, and know that those people are earning living wages, you know, they're doing good stuff, it's just where it should be, and unfortunately, it's pretty much built out. It's just about full. We need more industrial land and opportunity in this town. So I really appreciate Ashley for bringing that up. You know, unfortunate, I mean, unfortunately or fortunately, we need to work with what we actually have in this town, and what we have are scattered parcels all through the town. Some are industrial, some are, you know, zoned industrial, some are zoned commercial. We have, I think, just an amazing central commercial district developing. When we moved here, I don't think there was even a Chinese restaurant in Greenfield, and now look at the opportunities there on downtown. I sometimes go downtown to pick up takeout on a week, on a weeknight, and you can't even find a parking place downtown. I, you know, it's hard for me, and there are plenty of vacant storefronts and there are areas that are vacant. I think we need to, we need to figure out what to do with what we have. We can't just wish for what we don't have. And, you know, so I actually was also thinking that after the dust settles on this a bit, that I would heartily support and encourage a joint committee made up of planning board members and town council, councilors, being sure that fresh eyes as well as voices of all sides are at that table, and seeking the thoughts of realtors, business owners, landowners, and others to do a thorough look at the various pockets of developable land that we have, and where and how to encourage its marketability and development, and to successfully meet the needs and hopes of our community. And I truly mean all of our community. In my opinion, it's time to somehow try to move beyond the stalemate that has gripped our positions for way too long. And given that many city towns like us are also grappling with these very same issues, I'm sure that there are other places who have had successes and possibly some failures that we could learn from. And I know that we have some of that knowledge and expertise right here in Greenfield. And I expect that knowing the creativity that I see alive and well in this town, there will be some solutions that are uniquely Greenfield. But I would very, very much see that go forward. And, you know, in, in the past, the town council and the planning board has worked together on some really thorny issues, and, you know, I think we can do it. I, I, I'm very optimistic. Right now, cities and small cities are doing better than the more rural areas, and so I think we have to embrace our city, our small citiness, and really use that as, you know, as a, as a way to move this whole town forward. And, and even though we're a city, we still can market ourselves as living in such a beautiful valley with so many recreational and rural assets that we really are, I think, the best of both worlds, and that's what I really hope to see moving forward out of this. And I will take this as, you know, a good thing that we've gone through if it really eventually comes to that way of looking at our city. So that's two cents on that. I too really do love Greenfield, and I'm frantic about it. Yes, yes, Jerry.
I just wanted to add to my comment earlier about the purpose of our having a detailed analysis of these proposals, is we owe that to the town council. I don't know, I haven't surveyed exactly how many councils are here tonight, but rather than a bare-bones, you know, recommendation, we owe it to them. We're trained to have background and have experience and we're, that's our obligation to provide that. I had hoped to hear a bit more detailed analysis at the committee meeting last week during their deliberations, but it just seems like that's an obligation to provide as much depth as we can of our reasoning.
Okay, so, let's see, do you want to take a vote on this?
No.
I haven't.
No, we haven't. Yes?
I'll make the motion that we give a negative recommendation.
We made the motion.
Oh, we did?
No.
No, we didn't.
I know, I think so. The motion was made. I'm going to, we give a, make a negative recommendation to the town council on path three where we're amending the zoning maps as stated.
Yes. Is there a second?
I'll second with apologies to Timothy Cottrell.
Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Well, thank you all for all the homework that you have done with our, thanks. And actually, we aren't ready to adjourn yet. I did want, under discussion, for our board to also have just, because we tried to keep the library and process kind of out of our thinking, I did want to let the board also speak to other things that came up for them in the, in the public comment. And I wanted to just read in terms of the library, what the master plan has to say about the library. And secondly, like I said, our recommendation should be in no way taken as a reflection on the library and on the town council's own, the library. So as to our, our sustainable master plan, which was accepted in 2014 about the library, the building that houses our library was built in 1797. There have been no additions or expansions since the building became the public library in 1908. The industry standard for a town our size is 32,000 square feet. Our current library has 11,000 square feet of gross usable floor area. Since the library has outgrown its capacity, additional space with better accessibility is needed. Page 194. So I, I, well, maybe I'll start this time since I was last in there together. I think I heard from a lot of people in the public hearing that were absolutely in favor of the library, and yet sometimes were uncomfortable with this process of throwing these two things together. And certainly, I felt that way as well. I love our library, and libraries, in my mind, have just evolved tremendously over the years. Not only do they still serve up books for all ages, children, teenagers, adults, from their own collection, but one of the things that's been such an asset, I think, over the years is the cooperation between all of the libraries in western Massachusetts. So that really, as a Greenfield resident, I can get books from all over western Massachusetts. No one library can offer that, and I often do. And I often do. So our, you know, the library's capacity to serve the community is far greater than it used to be. And one of the most incredibly important new things at the library, of course, is that it is doing its best to keep up with technology. And I think that that really is very important, that for all people, whether or not they have technology or don't have technology in their own home, they can find that. That is indispensable for people these days, and that's very important to me. And I guess as I was just contemplating the library, I was thinking about the people who use the library. And thinking about that three-year-old who is excited to come to the library to find Mother Rose on the loose. And also, you know, the longtime patron of the library who finds themselves homebound and gets their books delivered to them by a volunteer from the library. And the noisy seven-year-old who goes bounding up the library steps, but also the people who need to use a ramp or an elevator to have access to the library. And also the person who's used the interlibrary loan or from their own collection to get, to get that bestseller that they didn't want to pay 30 bucks for, and their name has finally come to the top of the list, can go to the library and get that bestseller. But also, the person who needs to find a warm place to sit down out of the cold winter and also go into the library and spend a few hours reading the newspaper. So the library is really there to serve everybody. And it doesn't matter what precinct you come from, what income you have, how old you are, everybody can use the library. And that's really their mission is to use the library, is to offer that to the community. So, you know, I certainly hope that through all of this, the library hints a rounding, a wholehearted approval. Because, you know, it is an important institution, and it's as relevant today as it's always been. And then on top of it, there is this grant that has come to us finally, an investment in our community of nine-plus million dollars. I just can't for the life of me understand how our community, which of course is not a well-off community, and our tax dollars have gone into that fund, supporting that fund for other communities' libraries. So I, it's hard for me to understand not voting yes for the library. And I'm glad I could get to say that because it's been very hard in these few weeks, having to balance, you know, being honest about these amendments and, you know, not, trying not to factor in how I feel about that library. So I'm glad to have that opportunity tonight.
Wish you luck on Wednesday. That's what I would say. I wish you luck. And I wish that every building in town would be as accessible as that new library, which I hope that we get. And I would also like to thank all of my fellow board members for all of the hard work. Everybody got to come to the table and get something down and get to vote one way or another. We all did a lot of homework. Thank you.
Yes, and the other people can speak, please.
Did you want to? I'll literally change hats really quickly. This is my, your library check it out hat, because I got it through the library. And I was honored to be on the library advisory committee. And so I obviously, it's something whenever, when considering where to move, one thing we did was check out the library. So I think that's an essential town resource. Also, with my hat on as a former member of the community on disability access, and my professional hat as rehabilitation counselor, I am acutely aware of the challenges for people with mobility disabilities at the current library. And that's a, that's a real crisis. And lastly, with my planning board hat on, I regret, as I've indicated, the linking of these issues because I think it unfortunately is distracting from the merits, the pure merits of each and looking at those at the time.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to say one thing that I think zoning is a living flexible process. It adapts to changing community needs, changing demographics, and it moves progressively forward through time. The library grant right now is at its best, a once-in-every-other-generation opportunity, and it's only going to grow more expensive and less feasible with every passing year. The pro arguments for the library are exhaustive, they've been expressed by really caring members of this community who worked very hard to make it happen. And I think that, I'm hoping that the city council realizes that zoning is something that can be flexible, adapted, and changed over time, but the library is really just going to happen. This is our shot at it. So I just think it's important to remember that in deliberating these zoning changes in the state of the library.
Anyone else?
I just really want to thank the public for coming and sitting here and just to echo what everyone has been saying, this is really difficult to pit planning, which is our her view, against library, which is something I think many of us want and value, and I do not think they should have been put together, I understand why they did get put together. But I hope the vote goes in your favor. And I really want to invite, as we've been suggesting, people with ideas about planning, town councilors, other boards and committees in this town to come forth, bring ideas to this board. We can have thoughtful conversations over time. Planning takes a long time, or planning for the future. And, you know, we just can't quite do planning in this way. And we can be really thoughtful, and we can help shape the future of this community very positively. So I hope the vote goes in the favor of the library and that that's an investment in the future, but I hope they can become severed from the vote because I, you know, as the board has shown tonight, you know, these proposed changes are not solid planning proposals. They don't enable us to be sound planners and advocate for the best needs of this community. And so I think that's an unfortunate hearing, but I was really grateful to be part of this thoughtful deliberation tonight, and I hope all of our future conversations about planning in this community can happen in this way that we did tonight.
Thank you. Everybody feel like they have their chance? Yes, George?
I just wanted to, before we adjourn, I wanted to offer a quick report and reflection from the conference.
Oh, yes, yes. Thank you and thank you for talking to them.
And just, I wanted to offer this too, so members of the public get kind of a window on some of our training. This past Saturday, I attended the Citizen Planner Training Collaborative. It's an all-day conference in Worcester. And I'll, one unintended consequence, I think, of this current process is that it took up so much time and energy, it reduced the chance of more of us on the board going. It's offered twice a year. But that's not a complaint, that's a lament. And I'll just share quickly that I took part in three sessions, all of which I think very greatly dovetail with the master plan and with looking to the future of the town. One was designing for healthy communities, public health and planning. One was risks, liabilities, and opportunities, resources for municipal climate resilience. And lastly, tools to visualize your community's future and make it a reality. And these were a bunch of high-tech resources and approaches to various forms of planning, things that would project out to 2050 and 2060, and just enormous, obviously I can't share it all tonight, but just enormous opportunities. And it is great to have this. That place was packed with folks from all over the state, and this is a great opportunity to supplement our experience on the board.
Thank you so much. And I'm sure you brought that information for us.
I did.
The other thing we have to discuss, are you all in agreement that we shouldn't cancel Thursday's meeting?
Thursday's meeting? I don't want to.
So I think, I think we just need to move on. Yes, please. And, but I do want to share that I will not be able to be at the first meeting in March. I'm not going to be. And there are some C P A recommendations that need to happen, so I'm going to ask you to do a perfect fine job.
We can't be on that one.
Nobody goes together. You guys are jumping act.
What's the date of that?
I'll be here.
Okay.
I might just be.
Okay, so let's go ahead and plan. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Aye.
All of our productions at G C T V are sponsored in part by Bay State Health, providing the care you and your family need when you need it close to home. Visit them online at baystatehealth.org. Greenfield Savings Bank, visit them at 400 Main Street in Greenfield. Call them at 774-3191, or go online to greenfieldsavings.com. Greenfield Community College, providing access and excellence in higher education in the Pioneer Valley. Visit them at gcc.mass.edu. The Hammond Family, The Hammond Family are longtime supporters of Greenfield Community New Fortune Chinese Restaurant on the Mohawk Trail in Greenfield. Visit them online at newfortunema.com. Call them at 772-0838 and check them out on Facebook. Real Cleaning Services, cleaning Hampshire and Franklin County since 1972. We don't cut corners, we clean them. Check them out online at realclean.com. Call them at 413-422-1143. Peoples United Bank, located at 45 Federal Street in Greenfield. You can call them at 774-3713, or visit them online at peoples.com. The Solar Store of Greenfield, replacing fossil fuels and nuclear power one home at a time. Visit them at 23 Fisk Ave. Call them at 413-772-3122, or visit them online at solarstoreofgreenfield.com. Thank you to our sponsors for supporting all of G C T V's productions.